There we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the August 17th, 2016 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We need to have a change in the agenda. It's just minor, but it's for, I think, the Planning Commission's knowledge, is that the last item on the agenda is an action item. And there still remains a sentence in the descriptor that says this item is presented for informational purposes only. That is not the case. It is here. We will take action on it. So if you'll just remove that. With that little note, I guess we can, we need to adopt the agenda.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the proposed agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We are ready for committee reports, and we'll ask Mr. Unger to tell us about the Frederick County Sanitation Authority.
Yes, ma'am. We met yesterday. And what started out with is, we used about 7 million gallon of water a day, which is up about a million gallon more than what we usually do. We had some significant leaks in the county, in the area. Stevens City had two leaks that was over 10 million gallon of water. We had a pretty severe leak at our north plant, and we, I don't know how much water we lost up there, but it was a lot. But with all that said, they got everything fixed. So we're good there. The Anderson Plant has plenty of water in it. That's the one down Stevens City. The north quarry has dropped about six foot, but it's staying steady at this point, so we're better there now. Waste water plants are performing very well. And we got that West Moreland Project done. There was 19 or 20 sewer laths we had to fix down there, and they got those fixed and are finished, and seems like everybody's happy with that. On another note, we talked about leak adjustments for residential customers. In the last couple of years, we've had a couple of severe leaks, which have left customers with very expensive bills, $15,000 for a couple of them. And the leak was between the meter and their house, and there's been a lot of discussion about that in the last month or so. But they have decided to waive that, and if the customers from now will not have to pay for those leaks, which was very generous with sanitation department, because that water did get, did go through there. And the other thing we talked about was multiple family rates, which is mostly apartments, could be some townhouses. And changing the way we're doing the water meters, I think I talked to you about this the last time, but they're not paying near the amount that should be for the sanitation department to be able to incur the expenses that's going on with operation. So we had some developers there yesterday that do that kind of work, and after discussing the number that we had proposed to them, they've taken it back to the drawing board and are going to see if they can do anything with it to make it better for the developer and hopefully still satisfy the sanitation department. And that was it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I don't think we have any of our committee reports any further, but I would like to nominate Mr. Bill Klein from the Stonewall District to help us out in representing us on the Historic Resources Advisory Board, and we thank you for doing that for us. Okay, from the City of Winchester, Mr. John Tagnesi.
Yes, ma'am. We had a very short meeting, and when we had two items. We had a public hearing on the extending the conditional use permit for the Hucklebar. We sent that forward to the City Council recommending approval for another three years. Old business, we were looking at the corridor enhancement coming into the city on 522, and we've sort of redid the whole plan, and we're having another public meeting with new residents who are now included. And that's back on the table for the next month.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Blaine Dunn from the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chairman, thank you. The Board of Supervisors passed forward an amendment to the current budget. First Amendment, the first ordinance was an outdoor festival permit at the Request of Concern hotline for a Friday fish fry on September 2nd. The second one was for an outdoor festival permit for Karen Helm and Ron Huddle celebrating Patsy Cline. That was also on September 2nd, September 3rd in the evening. The third one was an outdoor festival permit for the Rotary Club of Winchester for Saturday and Sunday, September 17th and 18th. And the fourth one was an outdoor festival permit of Atrium Wonder Valley Fusion Festival, which was for September 17th. The Board also passed an amendment to the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget pursuant to Section 15.22507 of the Code of Virginia regarding the development of project funds for supplemental appropriation in the amount of $12,751,872, and that represents a sharing agreement with the I-81 Bridge, Tevis Roundabout Airport Road Project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is the time on our agenda for citizen comments, dealing with anything except the items that we have before us. Is there anyone who'd like to share something with us? Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment portion. Our first item is a public hearing. It's a conditional use permit 08-16 for Crossroad Grocery. Greenway Engineering has submitted for, excuse me, a country general store addition. The property is located at northwest intersection of North Frederick Pike 522 North and Cedar Grove Road Route 654, and is identified by, with property identification number 42-A-307 and 42-A-309A in the Greensboro, Gainesboro Magisterial District. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As pointed out, this conditional use permit before you tonight is for an expansion of a country general store, adjoining properties to the north, south, east, and west, or zone RA rural areas, and it uses our residential commercial. If I could turn your attention to the map on your left, blow it up a little bit for you. There's the Crossroads General Store is actually on the front parcel. The parcel behind it is also part of this conditional use permit that's outlined in black. This country general store is a permitted use in a rural area zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. The crossroads grocery provides general grocery and beverage merchandise and fuel sales. Also, it has a small prepared food service without seating. The country general store has been operating here more than 50 years in this site. A research of county records revealed that a conditional use permit has never been approved for the existing country store. Therefore, the use was established prior to this requirement, so it's considered a nonconform use, or a layman's term grandfathered. This increase in the level of nonconformity may be accomplished through this conditional use permit process you have in front of you tonight. The CUP also, this is just rehashing, but the CUP also allows the county to place restrictions or conditions on a use when a use is considered appropriate in an effort to mitigate any proposed impacts. This applicant desired to expand the size of this use by adding a 1,500 square foot addition to the store and a 3,000 square foot fueling canopy and fuel area. This 1,500 square foot addition to the store will allow for additional merchandise, storage, as well as an ability to expand the existing restroom facility to provide for a handicapped accessibility and a unisex restroom. This is an outline that the applicant had their engineering firm put together. Kind of shows you where everything's at currently, their existing conditions, and also where the proposed addition and the new fuel canopy and fueling area will be in the new entrance off of Cedar Grove Road. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency comments and requirements should be complied with at all times. Number two, an engineered site plan shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County, and the site approved accordingly to provide, prior, excuse me, to the operating store activities on the site, and the project site will adhere to the commercial parking and landscaping standards. Number three, a one monument sign shall be allowed on the property, and that sign shall be limited to 50 square feet in area, and the site should not exceed 10 feet in height. Number four, the store and fuel hours of operation shall be between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Number five, no outdoor display of goods will be permitted. Number six, fueling of commercial over the road trucks, and that would be tractor-trailers, will not be permitted. And finally, any expansion or change of use will require a new conditional use permit. With that, Madam Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you or any of the Planning Commissioners may have on this expansion of the Crossroads Grocery. For the record, Mr. Evan Wyatt's also here representing the applicant.
Any questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Has the applicant agreed with the state's concern and will comply with what the state recommends?
The, are you talking about the?
VDOT on the.
Oh, yes, sir. That's a good question. There's two comments, and the Department of Transportation, and also from Mr. Bishop from our department, had looked at, yes, they understand that. And we'll catch that by the site plan. Usually, on some of these, as they have come before you in the past, have been just, we did that illustrative drawing, but this will be a full-blown engineered site plan to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Oats.
I know beating a dead horse, but just to be clear then, the drawings submitted with the application showing those entrances, we're not approving that particular drawing because we're going to have to come up with a new site plan that the entrances do meet standards.
That is correct. The drawing is just illustrative that the applicant put together.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering, representing the conditional use permit for Crossroads Grocery. With me tonight, behind me on my right, is Jay and Rebecca Alkire, who are the owners of the properties in question tonight. What I wanted to do was to talk a little bit about the project itself, and maybe this will also help with the questions that Mr. Triplet and Mr. Oats just asked. When we started looking at the property, of course, from the aerial, and those of you that are familiar with the site, you know it's an older site, entrance is close to the intersection. It's just, to be able to expand it, you just can't expand the building. There also needs to be improvements to the site. So one of the things we wanted to do, to talk to VDOT about, was to put together the illustrative that you see before you. Of course, a few years ago, VDOT had come in and improved the intersection with traffic signalization, and that's certainly been a safety improvement in this location. But the current conditions of the site, the existing store is here, the gas pumps, there's a full access entrance off of Cedar Grove Road, excuse me, and then an existing right-in, right-out entrance on 522. What we wanted to do by expanding the store and by adding the gas canopy pumps was to get entrances further away from the intersection. And so what we are doing is, we are proposing to show a new entrance location here, to close this entrance, relocate it further down here. The existing paving can lend itself to also do some turn lane striping into here, so cars, if they're not at a stop condition here, and they are coming in, they can safely move off and get into the new entrance. The entrance that is up here, of course, one of the discussions we had with VDOT was for this gas canopy area, they have fuel loading here, so in order for the vehicle, the gas truck, to be able to navigate through the site, this entrance would stay open, although VDOT has pretty much told us that they are going to expect it to be converted from a full access to a right-in, right-out only. Now, to speak to the two questions on traffic, one of the things that we will have to do if the conditional use permit is approved, of course, is apply and prepare a site plan. What VDOT will require us to do in this situation, we'll have to process and go through what's called an access management exception request, and VDOT will have to approve it, because even though this is an improved condition over what's there today, the entrance spacing, as an example, is still a little bit under what VDOT would require in normal conditions. So what we will be doing is, if the conditional use permit is successful, we will ultimately move forward with a site plan. VDOT will have to approve an access management exception request that not only allows for the location of the entrances where we're showing, but how the entrances are configured and designed, and as Mark said, that will be done, of course, at the site plan stage. So I just wanted to make sure we were all comfortable with that. As far as the staff report goes, there was a question about if the applicant was comfortable with the recommendations, and the answer is yes, but with a little bit more specificity. Of course, this has been a community gathering place and store for many years. It continues to be so. It provides a service primarily to the agricultural community and the residents in and around the community. The way the business currently operates, they have store hours, of course, and then what they typically do in the evenings is, for the gas canopy pumps, they turn off the lights, but they leave the gas pumps open. People that live in and around the area know they can come through later in the evening and gas up, although it's not going to be a lit condition. If you didn't know that and you were driving by, you would probably think the whole operation was closed. So that's one condition I want to talk about. And then the other condition is the condition about the tractor-truck fueling. So if I may, let's start with condition number four. And condition number four currently reads, store and fuel sales hours of operation shall be 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. What we think would be appropriate, first of all, is with the expansion of the store, there may be the opportunity in the future where they may want to increase their hours slightly. They don't want to be open late night, but they think a 5:00 a.m. to an 11 o'clock p.m. would be a more appropriate timeframe. So, and with what I just said about keeping the lights off on the canopy, but allowing the fuel pumps to be on, the way we would prefer condition number four to read would be, store sale hours of operation shall be 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Gas canopy lighting shall only be permitted to occur during store hours of operation. So that's one consideration we would like for you to think through. The second item is regarding the fueling for the over-road trucks, tractor-trailer. Once again, we're going through a situation where there are no restrictions to where there are restrictions, and the restrictions become important because we don't want any misunderstandings that could put the CUP in jeopardy moving forward. So the concern that staff has raised is about not wanting tractor-trailer trucks to be in there to do fueling, and the Alkires agree with that. That's not a market they try to achieve, nor do they want to achieve it. But what we would prefer to do, they do have situations where delivery trucks come to the site, and they might, since there's going to be diesel there on their way, they might want to, you know, gas up before they go. So we just don't want any discrepancies or any confusion about what the condition means. There's ways that we can control the fueling of tractor-trailer trucks. For example, with the site itself, there could be something where you don't allow striping for parking that would accommodate tractor-trucks. Another thing that tractor-trucks like to do when they do a fueling, they have a technique where there's an additional pump that would be, this is the regular gas canopy, and sometimes you might see a standalone pump out here. That's what they call a speed pump, and that way, when the tractor-truck comes in, they can hit both tanks and get in and get out. So what we would like to see for condition six is, once again, we agree, this is not intended to be a truck stop, it's not intended to fuel for tractor-trucks. But what we would like condition six to say is, fueling for delivery trucks and automobiles shall be permitted. Final site development shall not allow for tractor-trailer parking and diesel speed pump installation. So once again, I think we're kind of saying the same thing as staff, we're just trying to get more clarity on the condition. So with that said, Madam Chairman, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Wyatt? Yes, sir.
If I understand what you want to do with the pumps, say, between 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., is the pumps will stay on, but the canopy lighting would be off. Wouldn't that not be a safety concern?
It would be. Once again, a lot of places prefer to keep the lighting on. Crossroads Grocery has historically not done that, and like I said, their motive is not to attract a lot of late-night business, but there are people that are in and around the community that know the pumps will be on, so if they're coming back after a late-night factory shift at 1:00 in the morning, they know they can at least, you know, gas up before they head home. But yes, I mean, it technically would be more of a safety issue than if they were on, but we think it's a better approach to not have them on during those hours.
All right. So the 24-hour operation of the pumps then is not advertised?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Unger.
I guess another way to look at that is, been working so far, and there's not been a problem with that as far as the lights, so I can't see where we heard anything. Now, the only thing I'm wondering, and I don't know, a tractor-trailer, or not a tractor-trailer, but business vehicles and trucks that put gas in the pumps couldn't come in the new entrance and come down along the road? Or, I don't know what that DF's in there is, but...
The DF stands for drain field, and it's really an untouchable. That's why you see the 20-foot buffer around it. The Health Department was very specific.
Okay.
That as long as the food service operation and the restroom facilities did not exceed what they currently are, then they were okay with the health permit as it exists. And so we definitely want to make sure of that, because that's, if they lose their drain field, then the business is in jeopardy, so we want to make sure that's protected.
So both pumps will be open, the one in the front and the one in the back?
That's correct.
Anyone else from Mr. Wyatt?
Evan, well, and this may be for the owners, but will they stay in operation during, it's a very logistical tough site out there. I went out there and looked. Are they going to be staying open while this is going on? I mean, then we address the traffic to that?
In other words, while the new construction is going on?
Correct.
We haven't really talked about that, but I guess, I guess you might want to speak to that, Jay?
Absolutely. And the reason that we did it, my name is James Alkire. The reason we did the site the way we did is so that way we didn't lose any hour of operations during our construction site, and that way we can build everything in the back, and then we can, when everything's complete, we can tear the wall down the middle, and we can go right into operation right at that time instead of having any delay and not making any money in that little bit of span while we're doing this. So I mean, that was the main reason why we set it up the way we did, and so that way we didn't lose any revenue, any time, and any downtime is what the main reason for all that was.
I get why I've got you up there. I want to ask one more question. The 1,500 square feet, so it's just merchandise?
Yes, sir. It's just for storage.
No food, nothing like?
No, no. I'm not going to put these sit-down. Be honest with you, I don't want to go into the next code of the Health Department. I would much rather have a to-go service than I would a sit-down service, because it puts you in a whole new ballgame when it all comes down to it. So we just, and 1,500 square foot is just enough to build up to. I'm not saying it will go that big, but I just want to make sure that we have enough room to be able to expand where we need to go for what the future might hold and where we might be for later on down the road. Because once we get diesel in there, I think that's going to make a really big difference, because a lot of our customers, our agriculture customers, farmers and stuff like that. So that was the main reason I want to bring diesel into it, just because of all my local customers that, you know, just are all farmers and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I have no intentions of catering to the truck stop world, you know? I mean, it's a total different ballgame, and it's a heck of a lot of money to put that much diesel in the ground all the time.
All this, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you. We all good?
Mr. Wyatt, where did this comment come that the operation would be 24 hours?
The operation is not 24 hours.
I didn't think so.
The idea is to leave the fuel pumps on 24 hours.
Okay.
But to have the canopy lighting shut off when normal business hours are ceased.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Wyatt? All righty.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to us regarding this conditional use permit? Don't see. Would you like to come forward? And if you'll be kind enough to give us your name and your magisterial district.
My name is Carolyn Anderson, and I'm from Gainesboro District. Okay, I live right there on the corner, and I've been there 50 years or more. What they're saying is like the septic system that's over there. Who's going to regulate that? I mean, the Health Department told them, okay, as long as you stay there and don't add any to it, then it's fine. But then they're going to be open, more hours and more traffic. How are they going to stay in that dear little cocoon? And where's it going to go? That whole system has to be 50, 60 years old, and it's never been touched, and we're adding all this stuff to it, and they say you can't, you know, add any more to it. Who's going to watch them? Who's going to make sure they don't? And another thing is, the driveways, the ins and outs. VDOT told me that they would rather bring all the traffic off of 522 and close all those entrances that's coming off 654, because it is a hazard now. I've got a mirror there to get out of my driveway. But they said they're going to close that one, but open another run on down the road a little bit? And when they open that, there is four driveways just beyond that. Four people, well, it's more than that, going in and out, in and out, and they're going to be using that to fuel and do all this other kind of stuff? It just ain't going to work. So bring it off of 522 and close that whole end? But I'd be concerned about the septic system, really, because any of them out there, they've got pumping goes and stuff like that, and these are just homes.
Right.
So I know it's a long road to get there, but, you know, correct some of your mistakes along the way. And right now, I've talked to VDOT, and they haven't really approved anything. They say, we might consider this, but we haven't approved anything. But they told me it was a done deal. And I'm going, okay. If it's a done deal, why am I here? You just trying to shut me up, and you're not going to shut me up, because I live there 24/7. They're there whatever hours they're open. There's a big difference there. And the traffic and everything, take it off of 654, bring it off 522. If you want to go big, then go big. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Would anyone else like to address us, please?
I was concerned about that first exit to ride-in, ride-out. My question is, how's that going to be marked? Because right now, it is a danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other of you would like to make a comment? Any? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public comment period, and I would ask Mr. Wyatt to address some of the comments. to address some of the comments that have been made.
Thank you once again. The question regarding the septic system, the septic system is permitted and regulated by the Virginia Department of Health. They're very much aware of the operation and what the proposed plans are for expansion, which is why we received a positive comment from them, which is in your packet. The comments from VDOT, of course, we've been talking to VDOT as well, and the comments that you have in your packet clearly indicate that access off of 654 is not something they're looking to prohibit. However, once again, they have made it very clear, and access management exception request process will need to be gone through in order to permit new entrances and to modify the existing entrance. And then the last question about the configuration of the ride-in, ride-out, how would it be marked? What VDOT typically does is if they approve a ride-in, ride-out entrance, they require when the site plan that comes in for it, that it's developed with a raised-type median. It might have a little bit of a roll curb on it, so if a tractor truck went over it after it dropped off fuel, it could make the turn. But it clearly delineates in-and outbound lanes for traffic coming in and out of the site. So it's not just, it's not just an open entrance with a sign that says ride-in, ride-out, or just with a couple of striping arrows. There's a physical raised median-type barrier that's constructed as part of it. I think that's all the comments I heard.
I think so. Yes, I think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. This is Gainesboro, but I'd like to hear some discussion about it by the commission.
Madam Chairman, I've been up through there, lived in that area all my life, and it's been, it is a tight site. I'll give that. They do have some challenges there, but I think that with the help of professionals like Mr. Wyatt and others and the staff here, I think they can be mitigated, and I think that they can be taken care of to satisfy all parties concerned. I have, I look, you know, if these people want to put their hard-earned money and invest it into ongoing business, I support them.
Anybody else? Anyone? Yes, Mr. Unger.
In my opinion, when it's done and after it's been engineered, it'll probably be a safer place to get in and out than it is now, especially coming off 522 and putting a turn lane in and having that entrance back if the site distance is good on 654. It's probably going to be better than it is now because it's been engineered correctly. And just to top that off, I think it's an excellent place. These country stores are going away, and I would love to see it stay there because it is a great store.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oats?
Currently, it's grandfathered use. The county has really no say in what goes on there. We have no say in shutting it down, whether it's safe, whether it's not. If this were approved, it's conditional use permit. There are certain restrictions that they have, wanted conditions they have to meet. And if they don't, then the county has a right to go in and shut it down then if it's not safe. So to me, it puts the county in a better position that they have some regulation over it, they have some control over the site. If it were approved, then not approving it because right now, we have no say. So I understand your comments. The drain field, it's monitored by the Health Department. If there's a leak, you contact the Health Department, you report it, they come out and inspect it, they have to repair it, whatever needs to be done. If it can't be repaired, they could possibly end up losing the store because they don't have proper septic system. So that's a risk for the owner of the project. Like I said, if we do approve this, now we have conditions, we have some control over the site, and can make sure it is safe.
All right. Ready to...
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of conditional use permit number 08-164, Crossroad Grocery, with the following seven items that was listed under the, taken in consideration, but number four being changed. The store and fuel hours of operation shall be 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, but also with the canopy lighting that will be turned off from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. if I had that correct. The number six, we'd also like to modify that for fueling of commercial trucks, over-the-road trucks, tractor-trailers, but we would like to have that for fueling of delivery trucks and diesel autos.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? A second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Embroga, yes.
Manu, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Molden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Truppa, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes, and this will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 14th of September. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from the next item as I'm helping the applicant with his conservation easement applications.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's the North Opecan Agricultural and Forestry District, request of Cumberland Properties for LLC to remove parcels totaling 407.48 acres from the North Opecan Agricultural and Forestry District. These parcels are identified as property identification numbers 45A-10V, 45-A-10W, 45-A30, 45-A31, 45-A32, and 45-A32A, and is located in the Stonewall Magisterial District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was a plan of commission again. This quest before we tonight is, again, to remove six parcels totaling 407.48 acres from the North Opecan Agricultural and Forestry District. The North Opecan Agricultural and Forestry District was established in 2013 and has been renewed one time. The most recent renewal of this district was when the county did its annual five-year renewal in 2015, and it was for a period of five years. The removal of these parcels will extinguish this district as a whole. If I could turn your attention to the map on the left, obviously, it's outlined in black The agricultural, the Agricultural District Advisory Committee or aid act considered this request at their meeting on the 26th of July 2016. Aid act unanimously recommended that these six parcels, again, totaling 407 acre, 407.48 acres, be removed from the North Opecan Agricultural and Forestry District. Staff is seeking a recommendation from the plan of commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this request for removal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Chair? Any? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with this about this item? This is a public hearing.
Good evening, members of commission. My name is Pat Gallagher in Stonewall District. Our property borders this, the Cumberland property, and we were here last year when that was extended in the agricultural district, and this year, it's being removed. And I'm sort of confused. I haven't had a chance to research why this is being removed out of the agricultural district.
Any other questions that you might have?
Just that.
See if you can get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Chair, would you like to discuss why?
Yes, this body is well aware of our Ag and Forestry Districts in Frederick County are our voluntary program that property owners can come into our Ag districts. In the same token, as being a part of the Ag and Forestry District, to answer the gentleman's question, is a property owner can request at any time to have his property removed from the Ag and Forestry District. This property owner currently is looking to put it in some conservation easement, but also do some development also on his land through bondy line adjustments and things of that nature. Once you get in, as you know, into Ag and Forestry District, the only land you're allowed to do is a family lot. So in order for Cumberland Group, or Mr. Cumberland himself, to go ahead and put this in Ag and Forestry District, or take it out of Ag and Forestry District, put it in conservation easement, he needs to change a property line or go. That's why he's requesting to come out of the district.
I understand that, sir. Yeah. Okay. Let's see. Any discussion by the commission? None? Okay, we need somebody from the Stonewall District.
Madam Chairman, I move to take this out of the North Opecan Agricultural District.
Okay, you're going to share with the board that we think that they ought to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Truppa, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Molden, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manu, yes.
Embroga, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will also go to the board on, gee, was it September the 14th? All right. Our last, I think this is our last item. It is an action item. It's rezoning 08-16WWLC submitted by Greenway Engineering to revise proffers associated with rezoning 03-03. This revision relates to the implementation of certain transportation proffers. The subject property is located at the northwest side of the northwestern Pike Route, U.S. Route 50 West and Retail Boulevard intersection in the Gainesboro Magisterial District and is identified by property identification number 52-A-B. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As you noted, this is a minor proffer amendment regarding the phasing specifically of transportation improvements, and more specifically, the extension of Retail Boulevard to simplify at the back of where the Walmart is now and the completion of Petticoat Gap Lane, which is behind the Walmart down to Botanical Boulevard, which is the roadway you may be more familiar with going next to the Marriott Hotel off of Route 50. With that, we have here the aerial graphic of the site for you. As you noted, it is on the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Retail Boulevard and Route 50. On the bottom of the screen, you see the VDOT shop there. It is Zone B2. That's not proposed to change as part of this, as of this zoning amendment. And with that, I'm going to move a little bit into the history of the site. As you noted, we're talking about 28 acres. When this WWW.LC was originally rezoned, it was just short of 71 acres. As that rezoning went through and the development was brought forth, significant portion of that property was sold to the Commonwealth Group, who developed the Walmart and a number of other properties that you see out there today, Sonic, Bank of Clark County, First Bank, all those, all those good things that are out there. So now we're focused on this residual parcel still owned by the original property owners, So with that, you have the generalized development plan, which was attached to the proffers of that original rezoning. you have a collector road showing here that goes from Route 50 back to what ended up being Botanical Boulevard. And of course, this is Route 50 right through here. Moving on, as is always the case, as you move from a generalized development plan to a master development plan, you get more detail. So here you have the portion that was developed into the Walmart and all of those things. You have Retail Boulevard, which was taken back about that far, okay? And then as far as the portions of roadway that we're discussing today, it's the remainder of Retail Boulevard and Petticoat Gap Lane behind where you see the Walmart today down to Botanical Boulevard. And just for reference, again, this is the parcel of land that we're talking about right With that, what we are doing is, if you go back to the previous rezoning, the roadway that I've been referring to were proffered. However, the phasing was left to the master development plan. The master development plan calls for those parcels to already be taking place. So what we have here is an applicant requesting to push those off a little bit to align them more with their development parcel that they still have. So the proposal you have is to submit a right-of-way dedication plat for the remaining sections of Retail Boulevard and Petticoat Gap Lane within 180 days of conditional zoning amendment approval by the Board of Supervisors, should the board smile upon the application, of course. Prior to exceeding 50,000 square foot of site development, the applicant will design and construct or bond the remainder of Retail Boulevard and Petticoat Gap Lane. Additionally, construction must occur on or before the completion of Phase II Lutheran Boulevard transportation program. So the roadways further to the west associated with the Lutheran home development, if as Phase II of that develops, frankly, regardless of whether this applicant has done anything on this property, could still trigger this. Now, there are some comments for you to consider as you speak with Mr. Wyatt, who's representing the application, and as you continue with your deliberations. First of those by the county attorney. It brings up the very good point that the right-of-way for Petticoat Gap Lane is currently under a different LLC than the ownerships of this 28 acres. So that needs to be addressed. You do have the proffer that it will be within 180 days, but I believe Mr. Wyatt's going to address that a little further with you in his presentation. Additionally, I mentioned that the proffer calls, the proposed proffer calls for those roadways to be developed after 51,000 square foot. It calls for development or a contract to construct. Mr. William points out that a contract to construct is really an agreement between two third parties as more than it is an obligation to the county. So he took issue with that, and of course, that information's in your packet as well. As far as VDOT comments go, the undeveloped portions of Walmart, the Walmart site, what I keep referring to as the Walmart site, they are asking that those undeveloped portions be part of that 50,000-square-foot calculation. If I can rewind your slides here a little bit, I'll point out what they're, what they're talking about here. Basically, they're referring to these portions, which are not part of your rezoning this evening. VDOT feels that those should be considered as well within that 50,000-square-foot trigger. Right now, that 50,000-square-foot trigger is specific to the 28 acres to which this specific proffer modification applies. With that said, I can take any questions you may have, and Mr. Wyatt is earning his supper tonight because he is here for this application as well, and we are seeking, assuming you're prepared to do so, we are seeking a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Yes. Any questions of Mr. Bishop? Any at all? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering, representing the WWW application. As, you know, John said, the takeaway from this is, of course, when the original rezoning was approved for this particular retail area, it was really the only thing out there at that point in time, and the master plan and the proffers were really trying to direct transportation improvements for this kind of configuration. Of course, since that time, and I don't know if you put the information I sent, the aerials? Well, I'll see.
I have my aerials in the packet.
Yep, okay. Well, you have aerials in your packet, but what the aerials show is what the county's done over time, where they've added the Silver Lake Properties to the west, the National Lutheran Home Properties. The road configuration has changed a lot, and there's connectivities and requirements for that as well. So botanical has been built, a portion of retail has been built, and the, you know, the way the original concept was laid out, it was really focusing more on this being kind of a major intersection. Back then, that might have been not a bad consideration, but retail really is now going to be planned to move more in this direction. This should be de-emphasized because of its relationship to the 37 interchange. But with all that said, the real question of the day... But with all that said, the real question of the day became from phasing. When is the right time to build Petticoat Gap Lane, which is the road that is supposed to be located behind the Walmart, that connects botanical, retail, and ultimately goes up into Lutheran? And so, we actually went through several iterations with VDOT, and the, I guess, the concept or the approach that VDOT felt the most comfortable with at the end of the day was limiting the 28 acres to 50,000 square feet. That was the discussion we had and ultimately what we submitted. The comment that they had ended up giving us about tying that into other properties, the simple answer is, that's not part of our zoning, and we can't control those properties with that. But the 50,000 limitation on 28 acres, obviously, is not the yield that this property's going to get. So what it does is it does allow development to occur in part, but then it stops development and then forces the WWW group to complete retail and to complete the half-section of Petticoat. So you have this network in place if it happens before this. Of course, as John said, if Lutheran Boulevard comes in before anything develops here, we have to build all this anyway. So, between the previous rezoning we did for Silver Lake and with this modification, the county's going to get retail and Petticoat Gap either way. But with a limitation on development, if this should happen first. So, but I do want to speak to the comment that the county attorney raised because it is a good catch. The way that this was all structured, and we've shown this information to staff and the county attorney, and they understand, but back in 2004, this parcel, it's actually a parcel of land back here, it's very rectangular. It was actually deeded by the WWW group to Petticoat Gap LLC, and the conditions on the dedication were it was expressly reserved for public street purposes. And that's been the intention all along. The Wilkins and the Solenberger current group have a good relationship with the property owner. But be that as it may, it is a good catch because it is a separate parcel. We are saying that there's 180 days that we have the opportunity to perform, and theoretically, within that 180 days, a site plan could be filed, and something could happen, and the dedication may or may not happen. That's, of course, not what's intended to happen or what's going to happen, but what we decided to do was just to make sure that it was a non-issue altogether. And so, what we're proposing to add to Proffer B1, Proffer B1 states that the owner shall prepare and submit a right-of-way dedication plat for Petticoat Gap Lane and the undeveloped portion of Retail Boulevard to the county within 180 days of conditional zoning amendment approval by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors. And what we want to add to make sure that it's absolutely positively locked down is after, by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, to say "and prior" to any development activity on the property. So that way, if for some reason the 180 days comes and goes, obviously, we're out of conformance with the proffer, but during that 180 days, until we get the right-of-way dedication plat prepared and dedicated to the county, we're not allowed to do any development activity regardless. So I thought that might be a good way to address the county attorney's concern. I think other than that, staff was comfortable with our development program, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Looks like Mr. Oats.
I just have one. Wouldn't it have been simpler if you have a good relationship with Petticoat Gap LLC, just make them a party to the proffers? And that way, it's taken care of.
You know, we could have done that, but we didn't, to be honest with you. And then to go back through and find that and get the signatures and all that, I think if we added this sentence, it would do the same thing.
It does, but if you get tensions later, then you get zero development.
We do. We're at risk if we...
It would be better, just personal opinion, if you go and get it wrapped up now and be done with it.
Well, our intention, to be perfectly honest with you, is after the board, if the board decides to approve this, is to proceed very quickly with the right-of-way dedication plat. But once again, I thought the county attorney picked up on a good potential issue, and I thought this would be the easiest way to fix it, was to limit our development potential until it was performed.
I'm fine with your proffer, just, like I said, it seemed like it would be better to make them a party and just nip in the bud.
I think the Wilkins are in a good place with that property owner, so I think either way we did it's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Wyatt? Any? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is an action item for us. The original public hearing has been held, so it's a minor change in the transportation.
I'll just throw in that I'm supportive of it. I know VDOT said something about including those properties in the 50,000, but I don't think it's fair to hold them accountable for somebody else's development. We've got enough triggers in there to get the roads in if needed.
Okay. Nothing else? Anything else from anybody?
I make the motion to approve. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes, that is what we...
To approve the rezoning application 08-16WWLC.
Second.
Any other comments? I'm wondering if what Mr. Wyatt has just said about adding
Yes.
any other development activity in that proffer. Okay? You understand what we're talking about?
100B1, A1.
Yeah, okay.
Question?
Are we ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also goes to the Board of Supervisors on September the 14th. Thank you very much. We are at the end of our agenda, and I failed to ask our director if it is that we have another meeting.
I do believe we have items anticipated to come in front of you, yes. So thank you for your efforts today, and we look forward to seeing you again next time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chairman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.